Kattoridhiyaparishutthanaamathukkumai mundaavada
May the God's holy name be glorified
Adiyagumum irandhamadigaram 11:12
The name of the first is Paizen, that is it which compasses the whole land of Avila where there is gold and the gold of that land is good, there is bilyum and the onyx too
Mudalam aathukku Paishon injupir, adha Avila Desam oluvathayum sutti odum avidathile pon vilayum, andha Desatine pon nalathu avidathile pidolagum koobedhakallu mudhu
Kattoridhiyaparishutthanaamathukkumai mundaavada
May the God's holy name be glorified
Pon vilayum
And the gold come athaut
Pon vilayum oru edamirukkathu, adhu dan Avila Desam
And there is gold and the land is called as Avila
Edin thottathile oru nadi porapputtu naalu aaru galakupirindhu
A river went out of Eden water garden and it was parted into four heads
Andha thottathu selikku vikumudiyaga, desathu selikku vikumudiyaga, Devan yairpaddithina andha nadi
And these are the river that has made the land fertile and to be the prosperity of that land
Adhu naalu divishinaga, naalu pagriyaa upriyigathu
It was parted and became into four heads
Adhalo oru nadi, modal nadi, Paishon
And the first is called as Paizen
Andha Paishon Avila yengara desathai sutti pogurathu
And it compasses the whole land of Avila
Appudi pogumbulathu andha edathle maramo chediyo koodiyoo ilavata polathatalu dana yendavidumana fusikkakoodiya evaigalo vilayikrathala pon vilayikrathu endru Bible cholukkathu
So the Bible says that where the land is, the Paizen river is flowing and where the plants or trees are not growing and that is the land where the gold come athaut
Naam inneekidha ponne kudithu varalavu vilangikkodala
And today let us all understand a little bit about this gold today
On namdhiya vaalkaila edhu edhalaa irundhalu illaattalo pon avasiyam
In the world life or whatever may be there or not but gold is very essential
Polathan adugal indha tangathai tannudiyaa adaramaga, ilavatal tannudiyaa madhipaga, ilavatal tannudiyaa naattinudiyaa pokisha mahavikrathu
The worldly people or the country of the people and what they are doing and they are making this gold as a symbol or they taking it as a treasure or precious meat of them
Anal naam yelitthim prakaramana ponnu kuyedangudukkathu le, avikuriyaponnakiyae viswasaathukke naam mukkithuvavukudukkaro
We are not going to give important for the little gold but we are going to give important for the gold in spiritual way
Ile kudithi naam mudalam pederu mudalamadigara yela vasanathle, indha alindhu pogurappon, ilavatal viswasm, ivegale kuditha varthee naam parkala
In 1 Peter chapter 1 verse 7 and we can read about the gold which perishes and the gold which is flowing with fire
Alidhu pogurappon, akki neenale sodikappadum, adhe parkidhum adige vilayireppichatha idukkare, ungal viswasm sodikappattu Eesukristu velipadumpodu, ungalukka puvalchiyum, ganna moom, magiyamayum undaga kaanappadum
Appo indha pon, yelitthim prakaramana pon, avikuriyaponni endraalikumbulathu, adhu viswasaathai kaanvikrathu
The little gold when it is called in a certain manner, in a spiritual manner, it shows our faith
Nam sabayile ilavatal avikuriyavalkaila, enna nakariyengale vilaviittalum, adavada mukkiamanaadhu pon vilayakkoodiyadhu avasiyam
In the church or in a spiritual manner when we are thinking about and the very important aspect is that gold is come athaut
Oru avikuriyamanshin endhu chunnal, avanukku payar viswash
When we are calling a spiritual man and he is called as a believer
Naamadaa uuliyar viswashinna renda pichu vichu vichu
So we are divided into servants of God and believers
Oru administration kaga pichu vichu mari vichu
And we are patterned for administration
Anal Eesu apdhi uuliyakaranga viswashini piriyala
But Jesus did not separate as a servant of God and believers
Pederu orunnal, nan kadallanidhanandu orathuma, abhinne Eesu utta kaikrathu
And Jesus asked, Peter asked to Jesus, can I walk in the waters?
Appai Eesu nandandu vangra
And Jesus said, you walk on the water
Appa on nandandu vongalubulathu thirinnum olukkara
So when he was walking on the water, he started to sink down
Appai Eesu onukku kayi kuruthu, avakattan odani Eesu onukku kayi kurukkara
And when he was shouting and Jesus gave his hands
Appai Eesu enna sonnara?
Jesus said
Pradhana apostolani, abhinara
Did he called him the chief apostle?
Enna sonnara?
What he said to him?
Arpa, viswasiyenna
And he is knowing of believers
Adhey pola kavaleppadukkara janangalai parthu avar enna sonnara?
And looking under the people that they are carrying what he is telling
Arpa viswasilayena chunnara
And he was telling that and they that are full of believers
Kaattu pulukooduthuvikrathu devan ungalai booshikamattara, udduvikamattara
And he that was flourishing the fine trees and cannot flourish you
Appai idhalan enna valingikondra, nama ellarmee viswasilathu
And what do we understand from this and we are all believers
Viswasil mother palankal
And we the believers or the first fruit
Indha viswasil mother palankalatharinde, uuliyargal veliyavarambulathu, adhu kuyayar Bible cholirke, mother palankalil mother palan
The believers they are the first fruit, if the servant of God, when they are coming up to the believers and they are the first fruit of the first fruit
Ilavatal viswasil daaniyav
Or the believers and they are the corn
Avangal onavamathala
And this grain can be turned into food
Anal uuliyargal daaniyama maramattanga vedayam maruva
And but these servants of God will not be turned into grain but they are turned into seed
Allam mother palan
And they are the first fruit
Adhalu ulandha first idhu eduthukondundhu vedayam athumbulathu, innan aneyakani galai arukudukku
Taking the first fruit out of the grain and it is making many seeds and these will turn into many seeds in turn
Kattoridhiyaparishutthanaamathukkumai mundaavada
May the God's holy name be glorified
Anal viswasil uuliyargalendru vityasamalathu, viswasil uuliyargalrendu me, ilavatal puriyarisalem seeyoon endhu, rendu me, aanndorudiyarrendu kangal pola
And there is no difference of the believers and servants of God, a new Jerusalem sign unlike the two eyes of God
Unnadapattla ninga padikumbulathu
When you see in Song of Solomon
Manavatiyai Solomitthi endra alakkarathu
And the Lord is calling the bride as Solomite
Unnadapattu aaru parimundru kadaesi pagriyaa parkumbulathu
When we look into chapter 6 verse 13 last part of Song of Solomon
Solamithil ningal ennatthi parkriirkal, avalirandu seeneen kutthathukka samanam annavel
Avalirandu, irandu seene
The two armies
Uuliyargal oru seene, viswasil oru seene
Servant of God they are an army and the believers they are another army
Kattoridhiyaparishutthanaamathukkumai mundaavada
May the God's holy name be glorified
If you come to our subject
It has come to the subject today
Endha edathil pon vilay
In which place the gold come athaut
Ah, viswasingra payar mukkiamalathu
The believer name is not an important
Omregi viswasm vilayenno, adavadhu mudichya adayan
Our faith must grow or it must attain maturity
Viswasaathukka vallachyundu
There is growth for faith
Viswasaathukka oru mudichyundu, ilavatal puranam endru naamade alakkal
And we can tell that there is maturity or perfection for this faith
Appo yendha edathle viswasa vilayidho, anga porattangal undhu
And where the faith grows and there are strides
Analatham viswasa vaalkiki naam porattathai paladangalaparku
So we can see the conflicts in many parts in the life of faith
Inneka aneyak edangalai viswasil viswasa porattathalani nikkamudiyamathadum arugirathu
Today many believers and they are not able to stand the struggle of faith and they were stumbling in their life
Pisas enna pannuva
And what the devil do?
Neesaa, ey, sadhana viswasiyaga irukkumbulathu prachinakadayadhu
If you are an ordinary believer, there is no problem
Viswasi sadhana viswasiyaga, payaralavila viswasiyarkumudhu, indha prachinikal kadayadhu
If the believer, he was an ordinary believer or namesick believer and there is no problem to him
Appa pisas onnu oru pannamattam
And the devil cannot harm you
Anaviswasa vilayyumbulathu, adhu avulla varuva
But when the faith grows or when it was battling and he comes inside
Adhu koori example cholukkara
I tell you one example
Nyayadipadigal aaramadigathai parkumbulathu
When we look on the book of Judges, chapter 6
Avang enna pannuva
And what they do?
Pisasintandramenna
And what is the craftiness of devil?
Nyayadipadigal aaru, mundru, nan
Judges, chapter 6 verse 3 and 4
Isreveler videngvithathirukkambodu, mediyaniyaram, amalekayaram, kilakkathiputtrurum, avergalka veerudama edumbivandhu avergalka edhri paalayam irangi, kasavin ellaimattum, nilathin velichilai keduthu isrevelile aagarthi aagilum, adum adugal kalidigalay aagilum, vaykadae povargal
Adavadhu velichaladhan karakta kedukvaruva
So first he will come and to destroy and this fertility
Shedi mulakimbo duvaramattam
When it is growing, he will not come
Pookumbodo varamattam
And when it is flowering, it not come
Kaikumbodo varamattam
And when it is wearing fruits but not come
Adha mudichya adairatayathu, yar vandruva?
But when it is attaining the perfection or maturity, he comes
Ah, anavila desathala uladana pon nalathu
But the gold which is found in the land of Avila is good
Andha Paishon nadi oodukkara, andha nadi karaila, indha pon vilayikrathu
The bank of the river of Paizen, this gold flourishes
Edinay kudithi naam parkumbulathu
When we read about Eden
Edin endhu sonnal, katturidhiyathotham
Eden means it is a garden of God
Oru manidinudiyae, oru viswasi, oru uulinudiyae viswasm, vallachyadigathu, velichaladigathu, mudichyadigathu na, adhu katturidhiyathothathalava adhu naraku
So when in the life of the faith of this believer or servant of God is grows, it matures, it gets perfection, it is found only in the land of Avila
Sabay than katturidhiyathotham
And church is the garden of God
Indha katturidhiyathothathalirukkumbulathu, adhu onakulae andha velichal undaa
When you are found at the garden of God and this fertility takes place
Ennaladhu devundhiyathotham endra alakkarappadukkara
Because it is called as the god of God
Angada devadhu thudrali modalavaitupathathu
And there he places the angel of God in the
Avang adhu onumilam aakidanga
And there were spoilt them
Adhu manshinakunduva angavakirathu
Then he placed men in the garden
Anga manshinyo avavandhu keduthu uttupoida
And he corrupted the men too
Yeh kudithila nama ellaradangali parkamudiyu
And this we can see in different places
Edin endhu sonnal, katturidhiyathotham, ilavatal nerthiyana edam, ilavatal dirpti kodukkakoodiya edam, ilavatal devanukku priyamana edam, endra alakkarappadukkara
When we call about Eden and it is the place where it is the pleasant place or the place which gives us satisfaction or it is the plainness which gives delight to God or is God's garden
Sabay endhu alagana oru edam
Church is a beautiful place
Sabay endhu oru devunudiyapulliyae dirptiyakkakoodiya oru edam
Church is the place which satisfies the people of God
The sabayin mele devan priyam kodukkara
And God is so pleased upon the church
Irayan virminnabadinal, inge nan basamupanduvay
I desire on this, so I dwell in the church
Indha sabayae selippavikrathukaaga, kattar oru nadiyavandu varathu
So to make this church fertile or prosperous and he is bringing a river
Ide sangeekarant chollumbulathu
When the psalmist is telling about this
Oru nadi undhu
There is a river
Adin neerkkalgal, unnadamana orudiyanagarathai sandoshipikku
And the channels will go and flourish the life of the heaven
Indha nadi, nadinudiyae specialityenna?
What is the specialty of this river?
Adhu unnadamana orudiyanagarathai sandoshipikku
And it is able to make the flourish of joy of the city of the heaven
46, 4 of Song
Oru nadi undhu, adineerkkalgal, devanudiyanagarathayum, unnadamana var, vasabannu, parishutthasthalathayum, sandosipikku
Parishutthasthalathai sandoshipikka takkadaaga, sabayae sandoshipikka takkadaaga, ponney vilayavakkamudiyaga, parishutthaviyana var, oru nadiaga sabaykula varukkara
The spirit of God is rushing like a river in the church to make the place a gland with the tapanuckles and the city of God and the church God
Ile kudithi ningal Ezekiel la parkumbulathu
When we read about this in book of Ezekiel
Ilavatal velipadatal 22 madigathalabarkumbulathu
Or when you read about this revelation, chapter 22
Singaasanthalrundhu porapputtu oru nadiyae, modal vasanathale parkala
And we can see in the first verse and the thing which has come out of the throne or river that flourished of the throne
Pinbu, kalingai poon, telivana, jeevatandhiru, suttamana nadi, devanum, aattukuttiyana varum irukkara, singasanthilirundhu, porapputtu varukkathu, enakkakkaanpitaan
Ible, nadiyalay kudithi ninga paladangalaparkala
So we can read about river in many places
Ezekiel la chollaapputtu nadi poradangal allar arokey undaa
The place which is mentioned on the book of Ezekiel is the river which gives a healing to the people
47, 1 Sambhavi pathi ennavindral, indha nadi pogumidamengum, sanjarikum, jeeva pranigal yaavum, pilaykum, indha tanneer angivandapadinaal, vigi eralamana machigalum undaiirukkum, indha nadi pogumidamengum, mulleyaavum, arokeyappattu pilaykum
Indha parishutthaviyinkran nadiyae, sabaykudevan, oru eevagukuduthukkara
The Lord is giving us a gift as a Holy Spirit river to the church
Eppudu pida, tannudiyakumarane koduthaarav
How father gave his son
Eppudu kumarantan jeevane koduthaarav
And how son gave life
Adhubola aviyana var, tannayam marathu, namakkulavukudukkara
Likewise the spirit of God hiding himself, is submitting himself into us
Naan chollathu ningal alla kavaniyaa
Listen carefully what I say
Pida, tann kumarane koduthu, ivlavaai ulakathil, anbu kundathu
And father gave his son, his love does not this much
Kumaran, tann jeevane koduthu, namil, anbu kundathu
And son gave his life and he loved this much
Aviyana var enna seyada
And what the spirit of God is doing?
Eesu 33 orsho, indha ulakathalirukkara, 33 oray varadangal
And Jesus was in this world for 33 and half years
Anaparishutthaviyana var, enrundrun namakkulavukkara
But the Holy Spirit is dwelling in this forever and ever
Parlavathukkani ninga poniyansona
When you go to heaven
Pidaavaparkala
You can see father
Kumaranay parkala
You can see son
Yara parkumdiyadhu
But you cannot see who
Appa enga pitara
Where he was
Enga rukkara
And where he went
Namakkulavukkara
And he is with us
Anga nan ponnain, pidaavikantain, aattukuttiyana orikantain, mahmiyikantain, pidaavikantain, abhinlaan cholirukku, yara kantainna orukkada Solanga, enna avar enga rukkara, nammal maathi, avarukopai kunduvinipattuvichukkara
And we can see that and I see father and see son but you cannot see the Holy Spirit because he transformed us like him and he changed and compared with glory
Avar tannay marakkarathu
He hide himself
Enga marakkarathu
Where he was hiding
Namakkulavuivamarathikrathu
And he comes inside and hide himself
Avarulla vara vara tha, avarudiyagunalalangal, namakkulaveliyavukkara
When he comes inside and all the things of him is coming out of us
Indha edin thottathile
In this Eden garden
Indha modal nadi porapputtu
This first river first see the thought
Ninga Bible la padichupathinu, naalu nadi, naalu aaru galpogu, adhapathina, var subjetathu
So when you see in the Bible, it is divided into four river heads, it is another subject
Appa andha aanndavara, andha modal nadiyavohavikrathukke, first reasone, edhu vilayenno? Pon vilayenno, abhinna indha avikuriyapadiyala, modal modal velichal edhu thava? Viswasa
The reason for the first river to flow is that, the reason is to making the gold to pass it is and we need faith in our life
Viswasa millamal, devanukku priyamayupadhu, koodada kari
And without faith, it is impossible to be desired unto God
Viswasickaravantha padaran
And he that having faith will not haste
Oru manjan chollirana, nan viswasiyadirundhal, enna seyavai? Kedupoyirupai
One man sees that if I was not believing, I would have corrupted
Appu idhalan enna valingikondra, modal nadi porathu, viswasaathavilayavikrathu
So what we are remembering or telling about this that and the first river flowed, opposite out to give us faith
Adhu matharamala, andha desathroodiyapon nalathu
And not only that, and the gold, land of that country is good for us
Alagatiyana andha tangav
And it is the qualified gold
Eva kolarla gudue edukkarananga
Even they are taking gold out of kola
Ah, adhu vandhu mankulla kadakku
So this also present of gold
Adhuyarichiyaduthu konduvandhu, adhu oru valiyai, veliyakondorva
And taking and refining the gold and they will do on many processes
Oru urla aasari, aasari maran, andha thangga aasariyakkaalaya, avungatthiruuk
So in place and they will tell that the gold finer and they will refine the gold
Avangatthiruulavodukkara chaakkada, tanney, urkveliyavadhatukvarudhu
So and the ditch water that is coming out of the roads, it is coming into the city
Adha angirukkandha thiru, andha thirulavarundharavachaakkada engavudhu Abhiyae veliyavur urkveliyavardhu
The street which is found in the other place but the ditch water coming out of it is
Anga oru koota okkada, andha tanneye suttamaniyadhaerukkara
And one group of people
Yavveetla kalyu uttadhu, gavnamalamu votadhu, idhu edukkathukkuna, oru businessukkuna, oru teamirukku, ipponjyam jyamikrakka, satthangulathalaponiyana, ippa parkala
And one group of people in Saturn Kulum and they are also refining or they are purifying the ditch water which is coming out of the house and to recover gold out of it even today, they are doing this process And that is their business
Ippeyim varshakana kasi jyadirukai
And they were doing this business for years together
Anal naan chollraponni, ippeyisaaakkadila varvadala, nadiila parishutthaviila vilayavara viswasa
But the gold which I am telling is not coming out of the ditch or garbage, it comes out of the river
Avishyaka, verra verra verra, vam viswasa velanji, adhu suttaponna maruva
When the anointing comes and your faith will refine and will become your pure gold
Yoobukku payangaramana sawthanai
And there was a great trial for John
Ava enna arikida?
And what he confessed
Nan sodikappattapinbe, huh? Nan ponnai vilangal
And when I was tried and I will become pure gold
Adavadhu viswasa parishodikkeppattu, adhu ponnaga maravait
Our gold must, our faith must be tested and it was turned into gold
Adheyvada vilayireppetha viswasm sodikkeppattu, onakkai, aliyadan, nittiyaganamukimi onakkukudukkara
And the precious faith which is being tried out and which gives you the comparative glory of a general weight
Paishon nadingrathu, adhapathu Bible cholukkathu, thadaintri odakoodiya oru nadi
And the Paizen river is the river which goes without any hindrance
Free flowing, abhinna English la cholirakka
So it is said as free flowing river
Adhavadhu rendhnevisha, avil naramo, thiribittappun, stakkaido, apputla kadayadhu
So it will not stuck in a different way or in between
Ah, oru chinnaprachinana onne takkunindra
If a small problem and they miss it suddenly
Adhu vandhu flow freeyaa vandukkadeerukunga, avishyaka
And it froze very freely, the anointing comes freely
Andha, andha Paishon nadi, Avila desathai sutti odum
And that river Paizen, it compasses it around the land of Avila
Avila yengrathu, vattavadivam, sarkularunna arto
And Avila means it is circular, or circle
Ah, abhinna enna arto?
And what does it mean?
Viswasaathavokkara oru, oru thamudikkara oru
And he is the one, he is the beginning or ending of the faith, the author and finisher of faith
Devareyarpandinandu onnala, ningilaparkala
You can see in Hebrews, chapter 12, verse 1
Viswasaathavokkara oru, mudikkara oru, maagya, avaryae, nokki porumayodu odungal
And he that begin of the author and finisher of faith, look unto him and run patiently
Analai, indha naatkaliyala, namdhiyapon vilayavendu
So in these days, our first goal must flourish out
Onudiyaponne parthu kattar cholunna, nalathu, abhin cholun
And the looking unto your goal, the Lord must see, it is good
Naor uru urla endupudhu, oru edavangrathukaaga, nama ellar rambaprayasappattu
When I ministered in one place and we took many labor to get a land
Appa andha janangal, evadu okkaniyavukutha
And the people offered many offerings
Sadhana kaniyakallu alla
And not an ordinary offerings
Panathakuduthavukkara
And there are many have given money
Ah, tangathakuduthavukkara
And they that have given gold
Edathu vittukuduthavukkara
And they sold the land and gave money
Vellipathrungal, palayapathrungal koduthavukkara
And they gave many vessels of silver, vessels
Oru silar, palayya, patupodaveelam koduthukudutha
And some they have given the old silk saris
Adhu, analulu, andha jariyavandi, enna rate pochidu andha patu jarigay
And the jari of the saris is also costly and they give the
Appo, indha thangga talan kodunundhu, patha bodo, pathi genna, andha kaathathu, andha palayya, priyapana karanay, veetukulay enna vichu kara? Locker vichunduka, indhalakka, bank lockerla, veetukulay taraila podichu vichunduka, chowthala podichu vichunduka
And they digged in the ground and they have made many groves in their houses
Oru veetla avang sonnaga, enga appa rambasalavicharadhanu soli, enga taata, adha pooti, parangaila saavya kodustathu
In one house, they said, my father is spending or lavishly and so they locked and gave the key to the grandchild
Adhu paragu pathi genna, avang eduthu vandha thanggangal allam, palayya thanggo
So we can see and they have taken the gold, they were all golds
Idha kunduva, namadriyavittanga
I sold it in Madurai
Appa papa varuva
Half one used to come
Arampudhalallu, oru aal mulam, oru aasariyach, enakkachigirundusi
So whenever I come and there the gold shop, he was in touch with me
Avan jachikvaruva
And he used to come to the church
Centravaidamla, naavichika, nakpa, avang kailakuduthuva
And he will set accounts in center faithom and give the money in his hands
Avavonukku, overate, potte, karakta kodundhu, kurupa So he Idhu vandhu karatkoonadhu, idhu palayya thanggo, idhilavellu vennesinjichi, koranjirichi, ellakleara soli, kana budukudukku
And you check every gold and you check every carrot and you tell it is gold, gold and new gold and give the correct money and submit in the hands
Omregi viswaso, annakidu oruvala, nalandukkala, innakiyapiyirkin, parkala
And your faith is better on the past times, you check how it is present
Ah, omregi viswasa vilayidha
And whether your goal is flourishing
Omregi viswasaathapathu, kattar cholunna, nalathu
Looking unto your goal, the Lord must see, it is good
Abhitam Bible cholukkara
That's what the Bible sees
Omvandraya sisthitu vichchitthu, kattar nee sonnara? Avayal nalathendru, kanda
And after creating everything and the Lord saw, it was good
Ah, Bible la, nambible la, Tamil Bible la, abhiyala, English Bible la, vandhu chavakalamay, sorry Ebrae Bible la, chavakalam, adha sengithu, rendhnevushonara, ebri? Nalathu, nalathu, abhi, analala, innaki, yudharagal, chavakalamada, onukkenedhu, yahova, vandhu double time cholirukkara, analala, idhu dam, urthan, alunnoch
On Tuesday, he said twice, it is good, it is good, so in the Hebrews and they were telling and this Tuesday is a good day and because like Jehovah called, it was good for twice
Onne, enneyum pathu, avar chollunno, nalathu, unmayum? Abhitam chollarade, patha onne, unmayum utthumana chollamattari, episolvaru, nalathu, abhinso liddu tha, andha, arikya vasipadhu
So after you looking unto you and me, he will make a confession, oh good, a good and faithful servant
Abhitam Bible cholukkara
That's what the Bible sees
Nalathu, unmayum utthumana, uuliyakarne, abhitam besara
And he was telling, oh good and faithful servant
Onle, annamdhiyadesathil, namdhiyajeevithila, vede, vilayikrathana, viswasaathapathu, kattar cholunna, nalathu
And looking unto the gold which is coming out of the land, we must see
Matthew 25, 21
Twenty five, twenty one of Matthew
Anudiyajamana, avanidoki, nalathu, utthamum, unmayulla, uuliyakarani
Ebri? First choldra varthendhu
What's the first word he confess?
Huh?
It's well done
Andha desathin ponni abripattadhu
And how the land, country of the gold
Andha desathin ponni abripattadhu
The gold of country, how it is, it is good
Omregi viswasaathapathu, kattar cholunna, nalathu
Looking at your faith, he must see, it is good
Ah, yeah, omregi, andha pon, akkniyala nikkeno
Because your goal must stand in fire
Ennagamo, 31, 22
Thirty one, twenty two of numbers
Akkniyil nirkattakkapon
The gold which is able to stand in fire
Akkiniyakil, nirkattakkavigalayapon, veli
Akkniyala nikkeno, adavadhu sawthan, porattam, parichchay, vyadi, pisas, marano, ivigallan, nee viswasthal nikkeno
Abide in fire, it means that you have to stand in times of sickness and kind of death, in times of medical problems, it kind of very proselytize life
Onr, Avila desathin pon
One is a gold of land of Avila
Idhu velichal ulavu, oru tanmayakkaanpita
And this shows the aspect or nature of it
Thovakkavundu, muruyavundu
There is beginning and end for this
Idhu kvalachyavundu, puranamundu
There is growth and perfection
Viswasa manadhu, kriyagalodukoda, moeyarchesaidhu, puranappadukkaranndru kaankurame
So we are knowing that and this faith is also getting exercise and is attaining the perfection
Redhavudhu
Secondly
Adavadhu gold la ulle, Bible la ulle gold, indhiyulla gold, enakkatiyada, evadhu, omregi than teriyao
I don't know about the gold of the little manner, I say is about the Bible gold
Bible la, innor gold, adutha gold
And there is a gold in the Bible
72, sangietho, 15, daavas
Seventy two, song, verse 15
72, sangietho, 15
Avarpilaitthirupar, Shebaavin pon, avarkukodukkappadum, avan nimitham, idayvidamal, javammanappadum, ennaalum, stottharikappaduvar
Avarpilaitthirupar, Shebaavin pon, avarkukodukkappadu
And he shall live unto give, given the gold of Sheba
Avar ennadrikkum, stottharikappaduva
And he will be praised forever
Ah, idhu, avarkukkaanikeya, kodukkara, oru tanmayakkaanpita
This shows the nature of giving him as an offering
Enna, enna, enna thangam kodukkappadu?
And what gold is given to him?
Huh? Solanga Huh? Shebaavin thangam, on, avarkukodukkappadu
The gold of Sheba will be given to him
Rajavukkaanikey
Offering to a king
Onre ningal purindu vallano, indha viswasa jeevyo, nama adhikama mukkupaduthukka karno, viswasa jeevyam gharadhu, oru kaanikey
One thing you must understand and why we are giving important to the life of faith is that and we are presenting this goal as a faith, only for faith
Namapanaam porulai, ennalamo, kattar kaka, nama kodukkaro, adhu paavamala
We are paying money and matters or many things to God and that is not sin
Anaviswasa jeevyam gharadhu, oru kaanikey
But life of faith is an offering
Adhaladha viswasaathukka, nama remmum mukkithukku kodukkara
So we are giving more importance for faith
Adhukor adayalamaha
Or as a symbol for it
Mateyilathunus, visesho, 2 madigaram, 11, vasan
Matthew, chapter 2, verse 11
Eesu kui, indha ulakathle, avar perandabodhu, modal modal koduthakkaanikeye enna?
What is the first offering which is given to Jesus when he was born in this earth?
Manamo, porul, or dresso, ibbin ningal, oru play, kundeyapathapana, enga voviyaa? Oru skattu vaidupoviyaa, oru dressavaidupoviyaa? Innan koncha, uruthana, rambaklosana relationa, onnedathutupavanga? Thanggasadiyendusina, veliyavaidupova? Innan topanaalu, thangkatvaidupova?
When the child is born and you may offer them as a gifts like any kind of matters or materials or things or garments or dresses and if they precious and give them silver or any other things of gold
Matthew 2, 11
2, 11 of Matthew
Avargal, andha veetukul, prevesithu, pillayayum, adinthaya, yemariyaliyum, kandu, saashtangamai, vilindhu, adhe panindukundu, thangal pokisanglay, tirundhu, ponneyum, tuva varukk
Pokishangli, tarundhu, modalavudhi, enna koduthanga?
Opening the treasures, what they offered
Matthalala, redhavudhu, first, enna, first, thangkatthavacha
And first they presented goal before him
Abhinna enna arto?
What does it mean?
Neeparlavudhukupona, nee onudiyakaanikeye jeevyan, viswasa jeevyan, onudiyakaanikey
If you go to heaven and you have to present the goal, the faith as offering to him
Marikumbulathu, vayilandha, varavandhi, varthe, enna, nama pettirallan, enna, enna
So when we die and what is a confession of tough of mind
Ellakporattathai, poradi nen, enna, eh? Viswasaathikkaathukkole
And fought a good fight of faith, I have kept my faith
Idhu dam main
And this is important
Viswasaathakathukollama, avang, evadu, buri, alarndhalo, avam vandhu, avangdhi, walvi, avangdhi, uuliyayen, enna, oru kaanikeya, irkka
If you are not able to keep your faith and you cannot accept or give an offering as life until your life
Sheba, abhinna enna arto?
What does it mean of Sheba?
Shebaan, nama, ah, ministersukkala, tamilla chollavanga, manbhumiguk, abhimang
So they used to tell, respected or giving reference to the ministers
Ah, English la, manbhumiguk, enna? Tamilla, manbhumiguk, English la, eminent, ah, madhipukkuriya
And they were reverence or giving some importance to the minister
Innor arto, uridimoli, abhinna arto
Another meaning is taking oath or giving uppers
Mo, adutha arto, yelumadangupuranam
And seven times of perfection
Adutha arto, bali
And next meaning is sacrifice
Sheba yengrathu, arto, oru naal, injartar
And there are four or five meanings for the word Sheba
Indha Sheba rajasthari, paakkavondaale, avale, payangaramana, ponnavitu vandha
And the queen of Sheba when she came to visit and she was taking many kinds of goals
Appa namdhiyavalkaila, rajavapakabono, abhinna, andha saasthriyagal, ponnakundavundhu, mari, namdhiyaviswasa jeevitha, nama kaanikeya, avarkukumunala, vikkamudi
So if you want to present an offering before him and allow these big event or things and we have to present goal before him
Indha Sheba, abhinna, baliyin, arto
And Sheba means sacrifice
Ninga Bible la padichiguna
When you read in the Bible
Viswasa maagiyabali, abhinna
It is said, the sacrifice of faith
Philippier, 2, 14
2, 17 of Philippians
Viswasa jeevyo, oru baliyana jeevyas
So life of faith, it is a sacrifice
Meelum, ungal viswasa maagiyabaliyin, meelum
Viswasa maagiyabali
And it is sacrifice, the service of your faith
Shebaavin ponnungrathu, baliyin jeevitha, kaanvikrathu
The gold of Sheba which shows the life of sacrifice
Yes, indha ulakathala, vandhu, arpojinchin, pisasathavathu, marithore, elipun, nalamukkiamalathu
And Jesus
Tannay jeevadaara, kirvadaara, baliyaga, nijjaru, opukuttara, adha mukkiam
Jesus came to this world and he submitted himself, he surrendered and sacrificed himself and that doesn't matter, he submitted himself as a appreciation for us
Adhubola
Likewise
Sheba yengrathu, uridimoli
And Sheba means and it is oath
Ilavata pradistha
Or it is consecration
Ilavata teermaanam
Or there are decisions
Oru devunudiyapullay, viswasa jeevithila, viswasaathavittukudukkamattan, pradistha pannavu
And child of God in the life of faith and they have to take a determination that they will not lose their faith in their life
Viswasthalana, nippanne, nee opukudukkare, adhu oru kaanikey
Surrendering yourself that I will stand in faith and that is an offering
Adhu, adutha solirukkara, andha Shebaan chunnan, punidhatin puranam, abhinno oru vartha
And another meaning for Sheba means it is a perfection of the same thing
Ah, adham parishutthana, namkellarkamethiri
We all know that that is holiness
Ilavata viswasa tin puranam, nee chollala
Or we can say it is a perfection of faith
Ah, yelumadang, abhin, seven times, abhinno oru artar
And another meaning and there is seven times
Appa naam indha naatkala, puranathlirundhu, puranathukkaramboonu
So we have to go on from perfection to perfection
Adhu dam namdhiyavalkai
And that is our life
Andha, modalavudhu, Avila desathin pon, nalathu, adhu vilayakkoodiyadhu, adhu mudichyadayakkoodiyavu, viswasa jeevyathikkaanvik
And first of all, the gold of Avila which shows it fertile, it multiplies, it grows, it shows the maturity and this shows the life of faith
Redhavudhu pon, Shebaavin pon
And second gold, it is the gold of Sheba
Idhu namdhiyavalviyane, namdhiyajeevitha, namdhiyaviswasa And this is the life of the life of Sheba is that and it is a reverence life and we have to submit ourselves as a life of sacrifice and praise and praise it toward gold and sacrifice as a faith of faith. When we are in the own race and we have to keep our faith and we must end our race. And that is the reverence offering. And that is the offering of consecration. And that is the perfection of the same clicking. So this way is a sacrifice. And this is what the Paul is telling that and I poured myself as a drink offering. A child of God who make himself as a sacrifice of nature. How many are able to offer ourselves as a drink offering? Many are not having the light to pour themselves as a drink offering. And he sees that I write myself by pouring myself into wine. And this is the next step of this gold. So we cannot use gold for everything. And it is having different niches for every gold. And the faith to attain the perfection. And the faith to offer as a sacrifice, it is the gold or faith of Sheba. A third gold. Second Chronicles chapter three verse six. And the gold is called as a perineum because he garnished the whole house with precious things of gold, the palace or it is called as a great sanctuary or dwelling place of tabernacle. And this is the nature of having. And life of faith is the thing which is able to garnish or adorn a servant of God or a believer. And we don't have any worldly adornment. But what are adornment? We have to adorn ourselves with faith and that is our life. And looking unto some, they were standing in faith and I feed my shell shame on how they beautifully are standing in faith. And sometimes and we may stumble in our life but without thinking and they used to stand firmly. A life of faith is an adornment. And the perume stands from the word Sanskrit. And the perume is transformed from the word Sanskrit. And it came from the word. And this is the goal to garnish the palace or the great thing. And this shines. You have kept gold in your house and after some days you can see after years, it got dim and you will give for polishing the gold. But this goal will never become dim. It never can begin. If the goal becomes dim, it changes from the nature of fine gold or pure gold. You can see lamentation, chapter four verse one and two. How was the goal become dim and how was the fine gold changed and it was poured out into the top of every street. The precious sons of Zion comparable to fine gold, now they were esteemed to earth than pictures. But what is the quality of this perume gold and it shines forever, it never goes dim or black. It is fitted like that. You can read in the Bible that and the whole temple it was fitted with the gold, it was not become dim and it was giving light all the times. See how it would be. And Jesus said about the temple and the stones upon stones, it would be completely destroyed. It happened or not? After Christ, it took place for some years. What happened, you know? And they fired and burned it. So what they did and they fired and burned completely. So after firing, what happened? And all the gold and it was melted, it filled the gap in the stones. And speedily and they fired the whole place and all the gold was entered into the stones. Now they have to spoil the whole place and they have to take the gold and it was filled with the stones upon stones and they have to pick up every stones and this is how the prophecy of Jesus was fulfilled completely. In second Chronicles, chapter three verse eight, we can see and it is the holy sanctuary. And the whole place it was completely made out of the perume gold and the whole. And what was the house? The temple of God. First Corinthians chapter three, we can see that he are the temple of God. First Corinthians chapter three verse sixteen. You've been to the temple of God. You've not the holy temple. And this temple shows your life. Temple shows your life. We have to construct this temple and preserve. And the faith in your life must never go dim. If one pastor is there and your faith will be good and will never go dim and next pastor comes, it goes dim, so the changes in character take place. What does it mean? Your faith must be turned into most holy faith. How your faith must be changed? It must be turned into most holy faith. And this is what we are reading the scripture as the law of the house. What does the law of the house? And the law of the house is that the holiness in the chamber or the limit thereof. Here we can see this faith and temple and it is holiness, it is coinciding together. Only when you understand well, you can understand the subject. Not only faith. Without faith and no one is impossible to be enlightened. Without which holiness and no man can see the Lord. So he was uniting love, faith and holiness. How your faith must be turned into. It must be turned into the faith of holiness. And there is no compromising in it. And you should not compromise in the laws and you should not engage together with this world or this with Satan or with these things of this world. When you are compromising with the sin and you cannot live a holy life. So you have to be very careful in this matter. The gold of perume shines forever. It brightens and shines your life forever. Whatever comes, you will not stumble. Remember the past days that you were enlightened. Fourth gold. And there is gold of affair. So and we have touched the subject on Sunday. Ten thirteen of us kings. This world of affair which is mentioned in nine twenty eight of us kings. Second Chronicles, chapter eight verse eighteen is also telling about the goal of affair. And this gold is taught by then this perume gold. And it is telling greatest among all the gold is the gold of affair said by the Bible dictionary. And this is the lofty experience or the experience in summit. And affair means fatted. And another meaning is it was a wealth or riches of prosperity. Your faith must be turned fatted or prosper or dissolved and rich. Literally, you may not have garments or having good food or ninth things, you may be poor but in spiritual manner and you must be rich in faith and things. And Jesus became poor to make you and me rich. It's doesn't matter that you have to purchase seven or eight cars or three cars to become rich. So we become the rich in faith. And this lofty goal for why it is given? And first I said about the land of gold Havila, it shows the maturity of perfection in faith. And this faith works with things and it is attaining the perfection. The second faith a goal is the goal of Sheba. It shows that you surrender the life of faith then as offering to him. Third goal is the goal of perume. And this shows when they are looking unto the every aspects or natures of the temple and complete holiness. Even it may be a tree and they will fit their goal whether it's pure gold or perume gold. All the pillars and the lantels and everything, it was fit completely with the fine gold. So even from the tilt lantels and everything, it is the fine of the perume gold. So everything is made out of like this. And walls and all the beams. You can see in second Chronicles, chapter three verse eight. So you can see all the beams and walls and doors and posts and everything is with of. The nails which was fitted is made out of gold. And you can see in the ninth verse, the weight of the nails was fifty seconds of gold. And they overlight everything with gold. And all the words which happen all paired together with this perume gold. So in your conversation, in all your desires and intents and thoughts and everything and your faith must proceed out. But for whom the gold of affair? So it doesn't matter for any wealthy people, it belongs to the bride. Song forty five verse nine. A brother of the king. I believe or servant of God, they that desire to sit in the right hand of the throne of God, a father, you have to put on the gold of affair. And you may have this ten pound of the eight ounces gold. At the day of marriage, it will be becoming shining, it is lightning but after some day one month, it goes dim and the husband may stare at you. And it may be original gold but it may be borrowed from the neighbor. After the marriage and they will get back. And this is world. And how the king's daughter, the queen is upon the right hand stand in the goal of affair. If you need to stand the right after God and you have to put on the gold of affair. And what does it mean for it? It is most holy faith. The gold of perume is holy faith. Offering long sacrifice and this holy faith will engage together. That's what we are reading, Jude twenty, most holy faith. It is good that. It is good, it is becoming perfection. And offering your life as a sacrifice, it is good. It is good that you are exercising the faith in every aspect of your life and preserving it without now going in. But there is a coming. And there is a state to stand as a bride. And how your faith must be there. It must be the most holy faith. And I want to talk about this for two minutes. And what are the aspect of this most holy faith? How it is called? In Jude twenty, it is called as most holy faith. In this in place, the word called most holy faith is used. In Jude three and how he speaks about this faith. And according to Ephesians, chapter one verse three in the either believers, the saints. And according to Ephesians, chapter one verse three in the either believers, the saints. One, one. One, one. And they that are in Christ Jesus and they are not believers and they are sins. So we are using the word and they that die in Christ. The saints that are in Christ and he was calling that the faith which was once delivered unto them. When you see another word. Thirty, ten of Revelation. And here the faith of the saints. Fourteen, twelve of Revelation. And the saints that keep the faith of the language. Perfection of faith or most holy faith, it is the high total, it is a peak level. When you see in another time. Second Peter, chapter one, verse one. And we have obtained a precious faith. You have obtained on the Lord of delivered your precious faith in your hands. When John speaks about this. When we look under first John, chapter five, verse four. And the faith to overcome the world. Five, four of first John. And this faith is a faith that overcome the world. And you have to apply the faith in worldly matters. We have to take cover mind, I cannot, I cannot do this, it is impossible. Possible, the Lord can do it, is well able and this is faith. You have to practice or exercise this faith. If possible, you have to confess the faith. If needed, you have to keep the faith. If possible or essential, you have to condemn for the faith. And you may see and how the situations will be. Where you have to condemn for the faith, you must condemn for the faith. The place where you have to keep the faith, you must keep the faith. And the place where you have to stand for faith, you must stand for faith. Not only that. And we all know about James, chapter two, verse twenty eight and the faith is perfect. And so this is what I am telling that you must exercise the faith. Once I met a believer. He was so poor. And with the family and he got hatred and get out of the family. And with the zeal, even if he was not getting food and he was in silence. When I visited him. He introduced not himself by telling that he was a believer. He was a believer, he was not introduced himself once I visited him and he had not good food and he was not even attending the church but he introduced him not as a believer. And the room, I visited him, it was a room in asbest seat. And there was no bed sheet or mat to sit there. And when I visited him next time. After transferring, after many years passed. And he was a rich believer in the church. In the coming convention, he said that I was spending eighteen lakhs of money for the convention and he was doing all the spendings of the convention. And he spent eighteen lakhs of money for all the expenses of the convention. I called, I visited him and speak to him. At last, he said, do you remember me? And I was the person. You came to my house but at that situation, you cannot, I cannot introduce you. And I asked him how you came here now. And he said that I started to go to church. I kept the promises, I started to confess the faith. I confess the promises. So this took me to this level. Are we doing like this? We wake up lightly and go fast and there is no time to offer the promises. You have to trust upon the promises. You must confess. Open your mouth and see. Devil may see how you will get the promises and you must rebuke him, you must chase him out. If you are Isaac, you are the promiscuous. And you are not Ismael. Your faith is so important. And nextly, your faith should not go sick. And your faith must be always healthy. One, fourteen of Titus. How your faith should be? And there should not be fever of your faith. And John does should not attack your faith. Cancer should not attack your faith. What I am telling is right or wrong? When we look at fourteen one of Romans. And how he is in faith and he is weak in faith. But Abraham was not weak in faith. There is no sickness in the faith of Abraham. And what Paul is telling about it. If one is sick and weak in faith, then you should not leave him, you must develop him. That's what we read in Romans, chapter fourteen, verse one. And you have to take them without weak in faith. But you see Romans, chapter four. And he was not weak in faith. And you should not get weak in faith. And so he was telling that rebuke him that they must be healed and healthy in faith. May the gods, holy name be glorified. Now we are going to end our subject. And what kind of nature is our faith? Your faith. It was the faith which was once delivered unto the saints. This faith which is delivered in your hands is the strong or it is health faith. The faith which was delivered in your hands, you must take on the perfection. The faith which is given in your hands is a precious and it is so sweet. The faith which is delivered in your hands is the faith to overcome the world. The faith which was delivered in your hands is the most holy faith. And you know in which stand that you are in faith. You have to fertile the faith which is new. Let it cultivate. And looking unto one man's faith and he said that I have never seen such a faith among the Israelites. And there are many in Israelites but there is none found like him that is having faith. Because his faith was so strong. Looking unto you and me, he must say, well, I am good. My son, my daughter, your faith is good. Let your faith be turned into the life of the same. So looking unto him, what we can present? And what you are going to give when you look him? So when you are going to this house, you will purchase something and go. If you want to visit Jesus, you must have the life. Your life is the life of a person that is sacrificed. And you have to attain the perfection of the same creature. And you have to pour your life to be sacrificed in the fellowship of faith. And you have to enlighten your life with the gold of pervain. And you must be turned into the holy temple. You have a law in you. And you must be illuminated in every parts of your life and you should never go dim. In your life, not only your life turn into holy faith, it must be turned into most holy faith. This life of faith is a prosper life. When you are like getting this life of prosperity, the life of faith life and you will put on the gold of life. And consider yourself as a bride. How it would be? We have a glorious day. It is all close of eyes. The queen is standing in the right hand of God by standing with affair goal and that day is nine. Lord, you make me to fertile this gold. I offer my life of faith in as offering. My life and my ministry, let it be enlightened in his life. My faith must be turned into most holy faith when I see you and I must be able to sit on the right hand. And those who want to surrender, you close your eyes and bend your knees. The lines, the words that you heard now must be proceeded or must enter in you. Failure, weakness or any kind of things on me come in any state but when you are hearing the word of God, the essence or life of word must have preceded you. And you, when you are desiring and your faith may be so feeble faith but when you are believing it and it will develop it. When one time comes and it will attain the perfection. When one time comes and you will condemn for the faith. When one time comes, your faith will enlighten. When one time comes and your life will be turned on to the glory. You ask unto him, I have to visit you as the one who was endowed with the gold of affair. And right now, let the fire comes into the life of faith. Hallelujah, 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 hallelujah. Jesus, 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 Jesus. Amen.